All right, thanks for your patience, guys. Uh, we're gonna get started now, so if you can please rise for the flood relief agents. Justice for all. All right, roll call of board members. Milnick.
Here.
Slips it on. Here. Justice. Here. Aaron's.
Here.
Clopsima present. Can I ask, is everybody in the audience able to hear? Okay, 'cause I usually tend to hear more. Okay. All right, um, moving along here, set and approve the meeting agenda. Does anybody have any changes for the agenda?
Like to add ten seven minutes, ten nine minutes, and a budget report.
Anybody have any concern with those adds?
What section is the budget report going in?
It's, it's in the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
And adding pop to the correspondence.
Okay, so, and adding rotten pop to correspondence received.
Is that posted to the website with your addition?
So, question. Yep, I'm planning to pull the, excuse me, the minutes for ten nine, um, to items removed from consent.
You still have to put them on the consent calendar.
Put them there first, okay, and then when we get to it, okay.
I think also there was, uh, new correspondence from Frank Highmore, so that should be added as well under correspondence.
Sure.
All right, under new business, I would like to add a detailed discussion about our financial statements. So I would like that to be, put that, um, first after new business.
And were we gonna remove item six from the agenda?
Oh, yes, thank you for the reminder, we're also gonna remove, uh, item six under new business.
So just-
And then, go ahead.
Just to be clear, you're, for new business, you were adding an item before item one?
Correct. And that, that item will be financial statement discussion.
And then you're gonna move item one down to after second public?
Correct, and then I'm gonna move item one under new business down after the second public comment. And there will be no decisions made after that closed session. The meeting will be, um, we will come back in and adjourn immediately. So does anybody have any concerns with any of those adjustments? All right, then, all those in favor of the, or I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that, Milnick.
So, motion made by Slopsima, seconded by Milnick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I failed to make one last comment. That closed session with our attorney, I will be managing this meeting to hit eleven AM for that. Okay, so just be aware, if I'm pushing you along, it's because we need to hit a window with our attorney. All right, moving on, declaration of conflict of interest, does anybody have a conflict of interest with the items on the agenda tonight, today?
No conflict of interest with any items, but I did wanna make a, uh, stand up for the record under this section.
Okay, go ahead.
Earlier this year, I declared a conflict of interest on the topic of short-term rentals. At that time, I was under some pressure and err on the side of caution because I didn't yet fully understand my rights and responsibilities in this area. For context, while my property was listed in a way that allowed people to find it online without a thirty-day filter, we have in fact rented a portion of our home in Whitewater Township to the same gas for the past three summers for three to four months at a time. They've become our friends, but by the end of the summer, we are ready to have our house back and we do not rent to anybody else. In the meantime, um, because they are planning on coming back year after year-
And I, I would like to say, this is not allowed. So this is a meeting and you're supposed to go, do you have a conflict of interest, yes or no, and why? For the agenda, not make your own public comment statement. So can we move along?
I think maybe this belongs in a different place. I'm looking at the rest of the board members. Uh, it seems to me this is not pertaining to this specific meeting, but maybe you would like to make this statement during public comment?
Or even on some report or some other place, yeah, this is not the point, the place.
You can just do it for first public comment and just start over again.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that would be more appropriate, so ba- back to the declaration of conflict of interest. I, I don't think I heard anybody having a conflict of interest, I'm just looking for affirmation on that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, no conflict of interest for today's meeting, so now we have public comment. Jill, would you like to step up to the podium first?
Would this be considered public comment?
Whatever you want it to be.
I think, I think either is acceptable.
Um, yeah, I think it's more of a, just a board comment, but, um-
Well, if it's a board comment, then it's in board discussion.
It's under item M.
Yeah, then that would be under item M if that's how you want to do it, as a board member.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, uh, do we have any public comment here in the hall today?
Good morning, my name is Vicki Beam. I live at six eight four seven Bags Road Northwest. Uh, wanted to start out, um, haven't seen all of you in a while, I wanna thank you for the service to the township. Uh, and I hope that you all remember part of the reasons why you ran and why you were elected. I'm not sure what the potential behind closed meeting is with the attorney, but I believe it has to do with Bags Road because Bags Road was mentioned at one point on the agenda for today. I'm also not sure how much I can talk about it because I was part of the group that sued the township. There's a lot to unwrap with that whole lawsuit and what is going on with the parcel on Bags Road. It all began, um, when there, when, at that point, uh, Bob Hall, the administrator, um, I'm sorry, zoning administrator, flippantly admitted in a planning meeting that he had made a mistake and it was only because Kim Mangus had really pushed him to talk about it. A lot has transpired, and at one point, former trustee Don Glenn stated the township was either going to be sued by a group of residents, taxpayers, or by the developer. And that former board chose to listen to the attorneys that you still have and push members of this township to use their hard-earned money to make sure the township did what was in the ordinance. The parcel in question exceeds our ordinance of four to, four to one depth-to-width ratio. Don't get me wrong, there are parcels around that exceed this, but they went through the proper procedure to be granted a variance. There was no application for a variance at the time that this parcel was created. Our parcels were created after that, so there was plenty of opportunity to make this right. And during the lawsuit, Bob Hall came up with reams of paper that were not there in the beginning to support what he did. But you can't do that after the fact. We went all the way to the Court of Appeals in the state of Michigan, and you are all aware of the status of that. That same group of attorneys have put you in a position where I believe the developers are now going to sue the township. Who is winning in this entire process? The attorneys. They gave bad advice to begin with. You guys can go back and look at the, um, the ZBA meeting. They should've nipped this in the butt, in the bud at that point, and we would all be better off financially. Certainly, I would be. The first order of this township be, should be to get better legal advice. Look at what they put you through with marijuana, same attorneys. Many of you are involved with that and used your money for that. I feel they're giving horrible advice with the civil infraction that you guys still haven't done anything with. They took what had, they had been paid for several years ago, made a few changes, and they were paid again, and it's the same crap. Many members of this township begged you to look at some of the neighboring townships and what they have in place, but you chose to ignore that and go with the attorneys. Again, you all have a lot of homework to do to unwrap what has happened at Bags Road, but the bottom line is, it's not a legal division. It ignores our four-to-one requirement. Again, it could've been, um, appealed, but it had not gone through that process. You cannot unring a bell. That piece of property is not buildable. Please get new advi- attorneys to give us better advice. They have cost the township and us taxpayers so much. Thank you for your time.
Connie Highmore, Bags Road. Um, I'd like to comment about our Whitewater Township master plan. We know a lot of work has been done recently to update it. We know from surveys and public comments from residents in this community that protecting the rural character is high on the list of what we'd like the future of this township to be. We see growth in the communities surrounding Whitewater to also be facing these growth issues. Subdivisions, commercial and industrial growth is picking up at a fast pace. I'm asking you, our board, to be mindful of the things you vote on to make sure that you are considering our master plan in all your decisions. I'm not sure how many of you are aware of this, but Frank and I bought our nine-point-five acre parcel in two thousand twenty-one with plans to start a tree farm. After prepping our ground, adding a well, and preparing, uh, for our first planting, that happened this past, past spring, we planted five hundred and fifty pine trees with five different varieties. We have the two thousand twenty-six plot prepped for another five hundred trees. Our land is surrounded by agricultural land. We have neighbors that are cherry farmers, uh, two horse ranches, a cattle farm, and a sheep farm. We look forward to seeing more of this type of growth in our community. You can't get farmland back, you can't grow more fields after subdivisions are built. Please protect Whitewater Township by listening to the people. Also, please do your own investigating after you contact the township attorneys. There has been some questionable recommendations given by this firm. Please do your due diligence in what follows our laws. There is always plenty of time to vote, even if it's at another meeting. We don't need to rush through these important issues that jeopardize our community. Thank you for your service.
Good morning, Julie Zenas, Skegum Point Road. I'm here today to urge you, as the board members, to, and, to pass an enforceable civil infractions ordinance before approving any expansion of short-term rentals in Whitewater Township. Short-term rentals bring real costs, oversight, enforcement, and legal processes that will fall on taxpayers, many of whom receive no benefits from these commercial operations. Here's the reality, and I'm just stating it 'cause I feel like I have to. Whitewater Township doesn't have a town center. Our municipal infrastructure just makes enforcement harder and more costly. That's why for a civil infraction ordinance must be simple and to understand and easy to enforce. It shouldn't be complicated that it ends up costing the community more in legal fees than it provides the protection to the citizens. Each township ordinance should be treated separately with penalties that match the specific violations. I understand that the township may be considering a survey to gauge public opinion on allowing short-term rentals. If this is the case, I strongly recommend, including the following questions and the, the following question in the survey. Are you willing to pay the cost through your tax dollars associated with managing and enforcing short-term rentals in Whitewater Township? Residents deserve transparency and assaying decisions that affect the community, the community's character and finances. Over the past several months, I've heard repeated references of freedom, often framed in a narrow and very self-serving way, even by our own treasurer during the civil infraction ordinance public meeting in late September. How is my freedom and my quality of life being protected when commercial businesses are allowed to operate in residential neighborhoods? If this continues, long-term residents and the value that define our community will disappear. I really urge you respectfully today to require the adoption and implementation of a strong civil infraction ordinance before approving any expansion of short-term rental permissions. Doing so will ensure that our community is not left helpless to unmanaged growth, increased cost, weakened neighborhood integrity, which is vital to the long-term stability of our township. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else, uh, here in the hall that would like to make a public comment today? All right, then we will move on with the consent, or with our reports and presentations. So first, we have Leslie Myers. If you can come forward, Leslie, she provided some detail in the packet, and she'll be addressing, uh, lake levels and the Bel Air slash Elk Rapids and other water control devices on the chain of lakes.
Thank you. Uh, again, my name is Leslie Myers, I serve as the drain commissioner and the operator of dams. Sure. And for the audience as well.
Um, can I ask, Leslie, are, are these different than what you provided in the packet?
I don't know if you got this or if you got one of my presentations, I'm not sure.
Okay, no, no, we didn't get that, but thank you for bringing it.
Okay, um, I'm doing about six to eight presentations a week, and every day I learn something new. And so, I'm not sure what I might've said to you before packets went out.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem, thanks.
You had asked me to specifically address some specific questions, um, and I'm here to answer any other additional that you might have. But what the problem statement really is at this point is we have a hundred-year-plus-old infrastructure maintaining the Elk River chain of lakes. The Elk Rapids Dam is a hundred and ten years old. The Bel Air Dam is a hundred and twenty years old. And in between, throughout the years, Antrim County has themselves done all of the maintenance and work on these dams. It's come to the point now where we can't afford to do so. Lake level orders were put into effect in nineteen, um, seventy and nineteen ninety, respectively, for Elk Rapids and Bel Air. Um, they were all done under a nineteen sixty-one Lake Level Act. And they're outdated and antiquated, we need to update those. Today, we must follow a new standard, which is part three oh seven of Public Act four fifty-one. We have determined that there are no further grant funding available. I cannot find money anywhere. My last grant that I was able to get was for half a million dollars to do the engineering and create construction documents for Bel Air. It took us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to find out that it's going to cost us somewhere between six-point-two and six-point-seven million dollars to make the repairs at Bel Air. Sadly, I had no idea that that's just how far two hundred and fifty thousand dollars could go, that I could get a guesstimate, and that's guesstimate as if I built today, and we know that's not going to happen. So I still have to determine how I'm going to go through this. The first step of the process of, um, establishing lake level orders and a special assessment under part three oh one is, is that we must determine a delegated authority. Antrim County, after the storms of March through early April of this past spring, when most of northern Michigan saw ice, all of us around the lakes saw just rain. The rain rose and rose and rose, and it brought it to the forefront up in Antrim County, there was lots of flooding. Antrim offered to be the delegated authority for all four counties because it's important to remember that the Elk River chain of lakes covers four counties. And again, Antrim County has taken and done what they can for the last hundred-plus years, and we just can't do it anymore. Calcasas County has chosen to join along and appoint Antrim County also as a delegated authority. We are working with Grand Travers County and Charlevoix County now to determine what they're going to do. It, from what I understand, Grand Travers County has gone into closed session and they're ready to make a decision at one of their next meetings. And what that decision will be is, do they want to appoint Antrim County as a delegated authority? Or do they want to provide someone from their organization to become that delegated authority, so it would become a group authority? In my personal opinion, I'd like to see Antrim County stay the delegated authority because it'll keep costs down. There won't be extra attorneys coming to the table, extra engineers, et cetera. Why do I care so much about saving money? Well, number one, I've been a public servant for the last forty-two years. It's always been my job to be fiscally responsible. But even more than that, I'm going to be a member of one of these special assessment districts myself. So of course, I wanna keep costs low. Charlevoix County is supposed to address this at the second meeting in November, or the second Wednesday of November. How do we determine special assessment district boundaries? It will be determined by, um, indirect or direct benefit to the chain of lakes. Direct benefit would be for those that live right on the water. And indirect benefit would be for those that don't live on the water, but somehow have some deeded access to the water. The one example that's easiest for me to explain, and maybe some of you have been there, if any of you have been to Shanty Creek down at Lake Bel Air, Shanty Creek owns, or not Shanty Creek, but the Summit Village Beach Club exists down there. It's a twenty-acre parcel, and there are about five hundred units that have access to that beach club with the ability to keep a boat, to swim, and hundreds of people use that property every day in the summer. Those people would have an indirect benefit, so they would have some responsibility for making sure we maintain the chain of lakes. Why a special assessment district, you ask? Well, there is no other way to really do it. Again, um, it wouldn't it be nice? As you know, the chain of lakes is all of our economic driver for the entire region, let's admit it. Without the chain of lakes, we probably wouldn't all be sitting here today. And, but the drain commissioner and Antrim County does not have the right to put a visitors' tax or something like that on there. So we have no choice that we have found, unless somebody knows Kid Rock or Madonna and they can come do a concert for us and we can raise some money, but otherwise, I just don't know how to do it. So we would be, I have been working on determining who has direct benefit. That's the easy one. If you live on the water or the connecting waterways that are in between, then of course, you have a direct benefit. It's the indirects that are difficult. So I have been gathering all of the plat maps for all of the subdivisions that may be around, um, the lakes. And in some of those subdivisions, there has been a deeded park or boat launch site or whatnot, and so we're identifying each one of those. So I'm having to try, uh, to touch approximately six thousand parcels is what has been identified totally. That doesn't mean that there's six thousand people to share this cost. That means there's six thousand units that have to be looked at further. For example, a marina with two hundred boat slips is a lot more intense than a resident. So if we think of a, of a home on the water, like mine, I get one benefit. How many benefits did the guy get with two hundred boat slips? So we're still determining that, that has not been done yet. Throughout this process, sadly, there is not a vote of the people, which would be very difficult to do too, over four counties. But a judge decides this, a circuit court judge has the authority under Public Act four fifty-one, part three oh seven. Public meetings will be held throughout the event. As I said, I'm doing about six to seven meetings a week, whether it's two municipalities or two groups, um, who represent that, those water bodies. A circuit court judge will modify the court orders as they exist. While there's really nothing wrong with the levels that are in the court orders, what the problem with the court orders are is that the court orders are, uh, listed in a datum from the nineteen twenty-nine U.S. datum. And we measure everything today in what's called U.S. eighty-eight datum. So numbers just don't match, and in order to convert, you have to have a calculator in your hand to try to convert these things. We understand that there is a nineteen, uh, there was going to be a new datum coming out in two thousand twenty-seven, but that has been tabled with some of the budget cuts that are going through, um, the state. So a circuit court judge will modify that court order to include and certify the boundaries. If this moves forward, and when it moves, I'm gonna have to say when because we're going to have to do something. Midland scares me, keeps me up at night. Um, they're dealing with now a forty-year, two thousand eight hundred dollar a year assessment for forty years. And then they have a separate assessment for operations and maintenance because those four lakes down in Midland and Gladwin Counties are now the proud owners of two dams that failed. They have to put those back together, and then they have to maintain them. So the average homeowner in Midland and Gladwin Counties that lives on those four lakes and their connecting waterways are paying thirty-one hundred dollars a year. That's absurd. Playing, uh, fixing things after they're broke is always more expensive than trying to get ahead of the approach. So our first step, once everyone is together and on the same table, will be to go to the circuit court judge, modify the court orders a little bit to identify the proper datums, but also to take into consideration, um, a law that was passed in two thousand twenty-four that gave municipalities some protections because a lake level order says you shall have the water at this level. What do you do if it doesn't rain for four months? Um, and municipalities were getting sued over this. So there was a two thousand twenty-four law that said we could put provisions into our lake level orders that stated, we can't fix Mother Nature. You know, we have to deal with, so that, that's a protection that would go in there. They would also certify the boundaries with that first trip to the judge. It wouldn't say how much benefit you had or how much you were gonna pay, just that these are the people that are in the district and why they're in the district.
So Leslie, would that also include, um, any kind of provisions about the different types of uses? Like the commercial user that's part of the sad?
That would be the second time we have to go to court, yes. The first time is just confirming, are these properties in or out?
And can I ask you a question on that, um, especially 'cause we just went through a very small SAD for about-
On Skegum Point?
Seventy properties, okay? And I learned firsthand, along with the assessor, um, the need for attention to detail and, um, the opportunity for error is enormous on that. So I would ask, are you already working with our assessors and their access to BSNA?
It's very fortunate that, uh, Dawn and Amy are the assessors for most of Antrim County, so-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it definitely, it's a group effort. We'll also be using the equalization departments at both, all of the counties.
Okay, good.
Um, and, um, BSNA is my new best friend.
Yeah.
Even though, yeah.
I would just say, um, be careful and, and it's good to use, you know, resources, whether it's the assessor or, in my case, I've learned a lot about Skegum Point and those properties because of the analysis, but using the township resources to make sure that things are not missed.
Right.
Generally, there's a lot of tribal knowledge regarding where are these deeded access properties. And the lake associations are also very knowledgeable about deeded access situations.
Yes, they are.
On the ground.
Yes, they are, yes, and it, it's a hard and tedious process.
Yes, I just, just stress that, get the help.
Yep, and, and fortunately, our equalization department's providing me a lot of help, our GIS is. My life is looking at maps and parcels and it's, when I'm not talking to people.
Right. Okay.
Hey, another question that you had, Linda, was, um, who might be these SAD participants or special assessment districts? Bobby back here told me that he's going to get me a hat that says that I'm the sad lady.
Okay.
You know, I thought the dam lady was pretty cool, but, okay, I guess I can be the sad lady too. Participants will include municipalities. So for you, Battle Creek Natural Area and Whitewater Township Park will be, um, given shares. So we will be working with you to verify exactly how many campsites are there so that we have that right. Also, what's important to note is DNR land is also subject to, um, that. County government is also, um, that, and so is conservancy- County government is also that, and so is conservancy land. But it's important to note, those with conservation easements, that's something different. But something that's actual land that was taken over by a conservancy, they are also included. So might a church, even because this is not a tax. This is a user fee. Yes, it's a benefit based, so that nobody is really exempt. Except for the state of Michigan, which is really interesting, but I'm not even gonna go there because I don't understand it enough. But DNR, in this case, is not the, uh, the state of Michigan. So again, that methodology will be by type and use. Again, a simple analogy at this point is one. And if we go back to the Summit Village Beach Club at Shanty Creek, they might each end up with a quarter. I mean, that's just an example, we haven't gotten there yet, but we're getting close. The timeline, we'll have to go back to the courts after the first round with the court system. And that ref, that role and the methodology will be presented to the circuit court judge, who will then make the final determination. Once set, special assessments, as you already know from the Skigamaw Point, I'm sure that you will be, they can only go on the winter tax bills because summer tax bills are much higher. So for some reason, specials just go on the winter. In my perfect world, and I always like to be positive and think of my perfect world, I would like to see the first bills go out at the end of twenty twenty-six on the winter bill. Because then money was, would be coming in by March and some construction and engineering, additional engineering work could go into effect in the spring of twenty-seven.
So can I clarify on that? So you're actually legally able to start assessing before the construction is completed?
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking because on the road, it's opposite of that. You start assessing after the road's complete.
Okay, then you had to have the money somehow to be able to do that. And in this case, we are, I had a six thousand, or six hundred thousand dollar budget when this all started for dam or reserve proper, uh, issues. Fortunately, the money came in from the state, which took me up some. I have authorized a study to be done on the Elk Rapids overflow spillway and the dam itself. In, uh, right around twenty to twenty-one, the FERC, who regulates the dam in Elk Rapids, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, canceled their visit and inspection that they are required to do every few years at the dam. They canceled it due to COVID. It was supposed to be in twenty-four, and again, they canceled it until twenty-five. And I received a phone call in late June that they were canceling our July inspection because of budget cuts. So I decided that we cannot wait any longer, and I authorized out of the budget the County Board of Commissioners had given me to begin that study. I have no reason to believe that anything serious is wrong at the Elk Rapids Dam itself, but I sure want to make sure if we're going through this process. Part of the specialists, that it's, it's important to also note that part three oh seven requires that I create two separate districts. District, the lower chain would be its own district, so everybody from the front face of the Bel Air Dam down to the Elk Rapids Dam would be the lower district. And the upper district would be everyone north of the headrace of the Bel Air Dam, all the way through the rest of the watershed. There is much more work that needs to be done in the upper watershed than there is in the lower watershed. But I must follow the rules as they state. I would have loved to seen it all be one huge big district, but the act says no. So at this point, what I really know that we have issues with is the overflow spillway. And for anyone that's walked up onto Dexter Street, it's quite obvious that there's a problem there. And if you can't feel it while you're walking across Dexter Street, look over the corn, the railing over towards Kids Pond. And in the presentation I did send, there are some close-up pictures of that, that you can see that it is deteriorating, and it's deteriorating rapidly. As we pulled all of the information together for the engineers, for the study that they're doing over there, we looked at a picture that was about fifty years old, and you could see that there was some problems back then, but not near as dire as they are today. We are really unsure, but there may be two specials for the lower district, depending on if I can find more money, et cetera. But if I can't, it's gonna cost me at least a quarter of a million dollars to find out what it's gonna take to fix it. And I'm going to be out of money before then. We can ask the counties to all come together to put some of that money in upfront, but we don't need to. The special assessment may allow us to take the funding to do engineering and set up the district because that part's not cheap, going through the court with six thousand properties is a very expensive process. I'm not sure how that's gonna go, I'm going to know more within the next several weeks. It's a changing game for me, every time I go to work, it's a new thing. I want you guys to know that I'm here to explain anything that I know and give you the updated information as I get it. I see that since you do have Zoom available here, that would be great because any way you guys can help me save money is great. I would love to come by Zoom. It would be able to allow my butt to stick in a chair and review parcels a lot more instead of being on the road driving and mileage, et cetera. So I'm doing everything in my power I can to keep this as affordable as possible, but to make sure that our lakes stay there for us, our children, and our grandchildren.
So Leslie, do we as a board have any responsibility to certify the assessment role for our township? Is there like an action that we will need to take?
If you would like to take that action, to the best of my knowledge, that's a no. But if you would like to, I would be more than happy, once that role's done, that if you guys would like to go through it again. One of the things that I didn't want to do, and I've explained this to, to you, Tim and Linda, yesterday, was I do not want to go into a front footage thing. That would just make this so much worse to do that for six thousand parcels. Because you have this much frontage, you're gonna pay different. To me, if you have a pie-shaped lot that goes down to twenty feet at the water, you're still using it the same as the person next door with a hundred foot. And to me, that would just make this process take that much longer, and we would be fighting for years, in some cases over inches. And I don't want to do that, so.
Okay.
So one, one question, I didn't, didn't ask it yesterday, um, because I knew you were gonna be here. But so a concern that I have, obviously, is not so much Battle Creek, while it's the largest parcel and, and the lake, it's, it's still gonna be one unit, right? I mean, because it doesn't matter how many square feet.
Well, it, it'll start at one, and if campgrounds or
Well, the campground is what I wanted to get to. So the Battle Creek doesn't concern me, but the campground is a boat launch, and it has fifty-five campsites. And, you know, we struggle to keep that thing afloat every year, right? Adjusting rates and this and that. And it's sounding to me from the presentations that it's sounding like a very heavy use, like a marina. I mean, there's a lot of boats that are launched from that dock.
Correct.
So I, I'm just, I mean, it just, I have no idea, because we're not throwing numbers out right now, other than the only thing I was able to calculate from what you said yesterday is the lower SAD has about approximately four thousand parcels. And, um, the, and the dam, oh, I didn't know what that was. And the, um, the Bel Air Dam is gonna be estimated around sixty-six point five million dollars to repair. And so just, you know, it's, it's a reasonable amount to afford for that. But we were just talking about one dam, we've got culverts to deal with, we've got spillways, and so.
For you guys, though, it's, at this point, it's just the spillway unless the inspection on the dam comes up with something else.
Right.
Okay, yes.
So, so the one, in the one picture, the one picture that was in the packet had corroded concrete wall. Was that part of the dam or was that?
That's the overflow spillway.
Oh, okay, the spillway, okay.
Double, is it?
There's double tubes in one of the pictures.
That go under Dexter Street and they pour into that pond that they put the trout in every year for the kids.
But that was, that wasn't my main concern for the, for the park.
And, and as soon as I know that, I promise I will let you know, I mean, we have not gotten down to that scale yet. Identifying the parcels is our first.
Yeah, and I would just say there's, there's a difference between, it could be considered a commercial operation, right? Because it's a for-profit park that we have. But it's, it's different than, say, Elk Rapids Marina. That is commercial.
Yeah, yours is, is a not-for-profit, and, and think of it, part of, part of Whitewater Township, the park was funded with DNR grants. So.
And also I believe that the property was deeded from the state of Michigan, is I believe the history of that.
So I, as soon as I know those answers, I promise they'll be before you guys. Do you have any problems with me just coming in via Zoom to give you an update? I could even do it at Call to the Public. You know, the beginning meetings are all the hard part where you get it. Also want you to know that I, we, they passed out the diving in for me, which gives you the background and history of where we've got. We're working on issue two for November, and it's going to talk just about part three oh seven and the rules and regulations that we're dealing with. And you guys, yesterday with that presentation, that was the first time I ever gave that presentation. So it's getting modified and improved, and I'm getting better at that. And I'm trying to keep the attorneys out of this as much as I can, just because they come at a high price. So do engineers. And we're being advised by what we call the lake level advisors. And if you guys would like to send someone to serve on that, uh, in that group, we have a retired drain attorney, a retired dam engineer, a professional grant writer who's retired, just lots of great knowledge that's out there along our lakes, retired, and they're really being helpful, so. And lots of the municipal leaders along the way. So if someone from your board would like to join onto our group, I'd be more than happy to have you. All of my contact information is on the newsletter.
So other questions from the board for Leslie?
I just wonder if she had a, if you have a dedicated website for this?
We are just getting ready, we had written the whole website, ready to launch it, and it's based on knowing where Grand Travers County and Charlevoix County stands so that it
You're waiting for that decision.
Just waiting for that decision. And if their decision chooses to send their own representative, that's great. We just want it to reflect that, and we don't want to change something as important as that and expect everyone to follow along.
Then when that's ready, we, we can have the ability to put links.
Yeah, on our website. Yep, Randy, you have a question?
I do, quick one here. So talk to me a little bit about how the process is going to work after the engineering gets moving along and there's, there's a design that's proposed and potentially some alternatives to that design. Who, who actually is going to approve the actual improvement that's going to happen? Is that the lead entity that you were talking about?
They, they are advisors only. Every county board of commissioner that's involved in that district will have to sign on board that this is the best thing with the Bel Air Dam because it's Antrim County's property and it's right there and it's not, you know, we had some money. Four designs came to the table. And the designs, I like to refer to them as the Jaguar, the Cadillac, the Buick, and the Chevy. We went with, we're, we're leaning towards the Chevy and directing that to be engineered, and the construction drawings be for that. The reason we chose the Chevy, so to speak, is it had the least moving parts. So it had the last maintenance and the less opportunity to fail. Because the Jaguar, I could have just pulled out my phone and made gates go. Well, the more technology and things you have, I want to make sure that these things can last another hundred years. So we selected an option that is a concrete overflow spillway that will just activate itself when the water reaches a certain point. It will go down the concrete barrier. And we will make some improvements to the five gates that are already existing. And then the, those five gates will continue to maintain lake levels.
So Leslie, with those approvals, you're saying that happens at the county level. Does that include public hearings at those points as well?
To select which one we're gonna take and things like that, no.
No, okay. So the, are there public hearings associated with this?
There are public meetings. Hearings take place if, if somebody wants to reject what's going on or whatever. Sadly, that's at the circuit court.
Okay.
But they'll have the ability to speak there.
There's public meetings, but not public hearing type thing.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Other questions? All right, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Have a great day.
All right. All right, Josh, you're next.
Right, I'll keep it short. All of the information's in the packet. I kind of provided a, a larger breakdown of the on-call program this month, so you can see where the coverage is sitting between our members. Strine and myself are, are pretty much carrying the program, but that's to be expected. It's still new, it's in its infancy stages, so it's gonna take some time to get it going. Wanted to provide you an update, the state is moving from what is the National, the National Fire Response Reporting System to what is now the National Emergency Response Information System, changing an acronym and changing who's collecting the data. We onboarded last week, so we just started doing, and it's a free web-based module where we enter our fire reports. It's gonna start being able to give us more of a heat map. We're gonna be able to see where our calls are kind of falling and centered. It's gonna have a dashboard, it's not a public facing dashboard yet, but you'll be able to see response times, how many apparatus respond, kind of just a nice, that was never a thing in the past with NFRS. So a lot more data collection. For example, if we ran a fire call or a car accident, and it's a car accident with an injury, we had to list it as one, but we couldn't list the other. So now we can start listing multiple things, so if multiple things are happening during one incident. So that's nice. So that's just where we're at, something I've been working on. Wanted to kind of spend a little bit of time today, very short amount of time, talking about the fire engine update. As we know, we purchased the fire engine in twenty twenty-three is when the contract was signed. We were supposed to get the quarter-two truck in twenty twenty-four. We did not receive the quarter-two truck, reasons were not given. We received a quarter-four truck. Now I'm just talking the chassis, so that's just a freightliner chassis, no body. We made our payment. Quite a few months went by, finally reached out, asked where we were at in progress. They said there was production delays, nothing really given, set in stone. Called back a couple of weeks ago. Little did I know, my lieutenant was driving through Grayling as well, and he actually stopped in. So he was there grilling them the same questions when I called them. So he was, Scott was getting hit from both sides at the same exact time. They ordered the body, which is the back portion of the truck with all the cabinets. They ordered the body. Lieutenant Tilly was told that they are waiting for another body to be finished, and then they're shipping both of them up at the same time. The issue is that pushes our now delivery date into farther into the winter, when we were supposed to receive it three hundred and sixty-five days after the delivery of the chassis. So I have something written, I will send it out for your review. I would like to send this letter to the attorney to get his eyes on it because it is a notice of default and an intent to cover with set deadlines to CSI to say we need a set deadline for when this truck is gonna be completed and delivered. And if not, then we'll hold them in breach of contract, and they will have to potentially cover the cost of above and beyond if we had to find a truck somewhere else. My fear is that with rushing the truck, we are going to have production, we're gonna have issues with the truck. So we did have issues with our tanker when it arrived, and it required CSI to come in and do some work. So I wasn't here when we specced this truck. I inherited this one, but it's just where we're at with, with the truck. We've, we've been in constant contact, but communication with CSI is lacking. I, I go days and weeks without getting returned phone calls.
Have they provided any kind of an estimated new delivery date? I know it was supposed to be delivered here in the fourth quarter.
When I called, I was told that, you know, reasonably it could be December, January. And then when I asked what repercussions they would have for breaching contract and not delivering at said time, and pretty much I was told there, there are none. So I did research on my own, looked at kind of some consumer laws and protections townships have, and kind of wrote something up based on that. And I just want the attorney to look at it.
So are you saying they did not commit to a revised delivery date?
No.
Okay, so no commitment.
So what I'm looking for is a So what I'm looking for is a written assurance that the contract price remains fixed. And I and I do know that it will because that's one thing that CSI is very good at, is they try to deliver the lowest price, and they honor the lowest price regardless of if cost goes up during production. So I will give them credit for that, but I want that in writing.
Well, the other thing is, obviously, we all, just so everybody remembers, we have that hard stop with ARPA. It has to be done by the end of 2026. I mean, thank goodness, we were planning ahead enough. So another question I have is, do we have something we need to do to your existing fire truck, knowing that we're going to have to make it another year? Is there anything maintenance-wise we need to do?
No, it's 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 continuing to get its hose testing, it's continuing to get pump testing. It's going to get its DOT inspection. It's just living on hopes and dreams right now. You know, it's that it's 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 getting old. But we're running our current tanker, pumper tanker out more frequently than the engine just because it it is a secondary engine, so.
Okay.
But the other thing I'm looking for is a written explanation outlining the specific reasons for the delay and any legitimate factors outside outside of CSI's control that prevented the timely progress. If CSI believes a force majeure or similar condition applies, I'm looking for supporting documentation from their chassis and component suppliers verifying the case and the and the duration of the delay. Because we haven't gotten that yet. They keep pushing it back on their suppliers, but we have nothing in writing, so.
Okay, well, send us the letter so we can look at it.
That's all I have. Do you guys have anything on the on if anybody have any questions on the monthly report?
Any questions from the board?
A quick question. So there's some kind of purchase contract, right, that we have with them?
Yeah, so in the purchase contract, it states that they can't be held and breach a contract for like supply chain issues, this or that. But it's it's very vague. It's like a one-sentence paragraph at the end of something else. And it's in the contract. I will include that page of the contract in my letter when I send it out to all of you, so you can look at it. But in reviewing it with some of my, I have some friends that do legal and reviewing it with them, we have a pretty good case on our side to push the ball faster down the court. Like I said, I don't want to rush them too much, but that's where we're at, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right, Randy, we've got the planning commission report.
Okay, there's a written report in the packet here. Let me just do a couple of highlights here. I went to PC Met most recently, October 1st. Approved the site plan for AIS, continued conversations with Giffords Webster on our zoning rewrite. We addressing the first of five bundles. We grouped zoning issues together into areas that are related to each other. Includes the planned unit developments, condominium developments, PUD sections, et cetera. Worked a little on the winery ordinance and sent that to our township attorney for a very preliminary review of what's what's there now, knowing that there's a lot of legal issues there. And then there's also sought assistance from Gordy Fraser to help us with the private road ordinance. At the same time, the outreach subcommittee work group continues to work. They met last on October 7th and began reviewing some of the information that they've collected from other communities. Also, there was a recent MSU program on short-term rentals, and several planning commission members have attended that. And then I understand there's some work going on to with a community survey with potentially MSU assistance. So that work's going on. Our next meeting is November 5th, which is coming up here shortly. Jennifer Graham from Gordy Fraser will be here also to talk about the private road ordinance and our site plan review procedures, making sure that we're following everything correctly. We'll continue our discussion with Giffords Webster on some of the zoning updates. Of course, here here are the latest from the work group and likely touch on the winery ordinance in addition to whatever private matters are coming forward that maybe our zoning administrator can talk about.
All right, any questions for Randy?
Very good.
All right, good. All right, Deb.
You have my zoning report in the package. September was a very busy month. Fifteen new permits were issued in September, pushing 89 as of today. There's probably a few more that are pending. We did three land divisions just this month. And the fourth new private road was named this month. So we've got Kestrel Lane, Monarch Lane, Andeg Lane, and Mark and Wood Lane, all new ones that have come in. It was a zoning board of appeal heard back in the end of September that was approved for a variance down on Island View. Short-term rentals obviously are not as big an issue because the weather's cooler and a lot of people aren't staying up here right now. I do have some, I did get a couple of new complaints this last month. I had a complaint recently about chickens and talked to the property owner and addressed it. The there's a complaint about camping. There, I guess there's a couple of areas. I had a conversation with the fire department last week. I was meeting with them for AFLAC. And between Acme and us, there's some woods and some rivers and streams that have campsites that are being created, kind of like the new pines. So just kind of be aware of that. Based on what the fire department people were talking to me about, they thought it was more Acme Township. But anyway, I did get a concern about that, but it sits so far.
Like the pines, are you talking homeless community?
Homeless people, yeah.
Okay.
Encampments, tents, a lot of things just kind of lumping together.
Have you heard of any camping off of Williamsburg Road by the power lines? I've had somebody, a couple of people mentioned that, that the big, the first big power lines that you come to, it would be on the left side of the road if you were coming from M 72. There might be a camp back in there.
Well, I'm sure there's deer camps starting to creep up too. No one's come in and asked for a land use permit for campers. And anyone that's going to put a camper on a on a site is supposed to pay $10. No one's asked for that, so.
Yeah, the impression that I had was it was a home, it was some homeless people in tents back there. So I just was wondering if that was on your radar.
Somebody actually asked to fill out a complaint form and get it to me or give me a heads up. But I have heard nothing about that. I I have one off of Bunker Hill, but I think it sits so far back off the road, and it came in anonymously and without being able to get on a property. I I don't just drive back a mile-long driveway and look around. I mean, I can go to somebody's front door and knock, but it's helpful when I know who I'm dealing with, so I could actually be on their property and observe what they're observing or if they sent me photos. And all I'm looking at is from GIS mainly, Eagle View or whatever. I have signed up for some upcoming trainings that are coming along. October 30th, Eagles putting on a presentation, just a webinar for Hold the Invasives, please. There's another one, November 13th, is being held at Torch Lake Township. It's being put on by Tip of the Mitt. It's on coastal water management. It's an all-day class. I've been to them before, and usually they're actually pretty good. They bring speakers in from around the state on different things that they're trying to protect our waterways, protect our water quality. There is another meeting, a webinar I signed up for November 18th on wetlands, and where are they now and how are they regulated? I do sign up for these. Most of them are free, so I don't have to come and ask for money or anything. So.
All right, any questions for Deb?
We do have a new owner at Mr. Sees. Mr. Sees is in the process of being sold. They does the intent is to turn it into a, keep it as a restaurant. I met with him Monday for about an hour. He's going to be looking for help. So if you know waitstaff, cooks, bartenders, he's hoping, he's in the process of getting a liquor license transferred from to him over the next few months. Doesn't know how long that's going to take. He'd love to open by December, but hoping to be open by January. So he's pushing that forward. And then Hudson.
Do you know, I'm sorry, do you know if we have to approve of the transfer? Or is it just the state?
I, at this point, it's the state. He has an attorney out of Charlevoix handling it. But I honestly, I have no idea. I don't get along, get involved with the liquor control, so.
Yeah, that was going to be my question as well.
Yeah, but you might be able to, you know, I can give you his name, find out who his attorney is and who he's working with to do the transfer. But they're transferring it from Mr. Sees. You know, Chris is working pretty closely with him, and he's already given him keys. He's gone in, he's sanitized everything, he's cleaned all the equipment. He's inspected the septics, he's put in new injector pumps, and I don't know, he just went through a whole list of things.
So has, is he already the owner or is it still sale pending some of these actions?
It's a gray area. I don't I don't know. He hasn't said for sure. And I mean, he's like a, he's he's really excited about this opportunity. He lives downstate, he's got grandkids. He was, he's been coming up here for like 30 years. He has a condo over on a Grand Travers Resort. So he knows the area really well and knows a lot of people up here, and he seems like a really good guy.
Okay.
And then Hudson, John Deere is starting the process of bringing in their their site plan information. I am meeting with Keith DeYoung next week to, I sent him a list of things I wanted to discuss with him. So Keith and I are meeting next Monday.
Is Hudson expanding?
Yes, they're adding a, they're wanting to add a 60 by 100 structure, so.
Okay.
It's just one more. They are all industrial over there along M 72. So it's within their lot.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thanks. Thank you, Deb. All right, back to where we're at. Next, we've got the consent calendar. So does anybody want to remove anything from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to move the October 9 minutes. Or remove, remove.
Anybody want to move anything else out or remove anything from the consent calendar in addition to that?
This for approval.
Okay. Any other items to remove?
Not really necessarily to remove, but can I just make a comment on an item?
Sure.
That we have a new format for the revenue expense report that Wendy provided and put in the packet. And she knows, I'm sure, there's still some adjustments, journal entries that need to be made and some corrections that need to be made, so.
Okay, and I think we're going to discuss that a little bit later on that new. Is that correct? Is that part of our?
Well, she, no, she put the report in the in the consent calendar.
She added to the agenda financial report.
Like detailed discussion?
Discussion, yeah. But not the specific one, but I think that's more in general.
Or general.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended. Need a second on that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kester. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, none opposed, motion passes. So now, why don't we first address the October 9th meeting minutes?
Yeah, my only question, I just haven't gone through it all yet because we got them last night and I.
You could table them if you want to.
Yeah, I think that we need to talk about that process. I understand having two meetings a month, it does make it difficult to get everything out.
There's been seven instances of minutes in the last six weeks.
Right, and so I I just think that I understand this rule. My understanding of the rule, I haven't read the rule, is that we have to have draft minutes to the board or out to the public. Within eight days of a meeting, right?
Within those days, yes.
But that doesn't mean we have to approve them within, at the next board meeting, right? Okay, because that's, it's just, that's the only thing I really wanted to discuss. I don't think there's probably anything wrong with the minutes, but I do like to go through them in detail because my understanding is, once you approve them, even if you find a mistake, you can't go fix it. So I just, I would rather, even if it's not even right, I still would rather be wrong about the eight days thing and approve the minutes correctly. So if we can, do we have to formally bring them to the board like this? And then table them? Or do we just not bring them until we're ready to?
I think you need to bring them to the board, table them, and then talk about them the next time.
Okay, and if they were, you know, I mean, if we got them, you know, even five days before a meeting, there would be ample time, of course, you know.
Meeting every two weeks, that's not possible.
Yeah. So I guess it'll just be something that we'll have to just table, like the special meeting that we had. I read those really quickly.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't anything significant in there other than just who was present and the fact that what was discussed.
So I'd make a motion to table the October 9, 2025 minutes.
And and put them on the next agenda.
They would show up as unfinished business, is that right, or as?
Do they then show up as unfinished business?
We have a placeholder for tabled items, don't we?
Yep.
Yeah, at the very end. It's not on this one here, but on your generic form.
Well, we can figure that out outside the room. But I will second that motion to table the minutes from October 9th. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed. Gotcha. All right, none opposed, motion passes. So then, any further, you said you wanted to discuss the bills for approval. So let me pull that up so I know what you're what you're discussing. Here we go. Actually, that was in the packet, wasn't it? It's in there already.
Hey, is that, it looks like page?
Yeah, there's a tab for it.
Here it is. It's on page 54. Okay.
So there's actually an error in here. Laser Printer Technologies has three lines there, and that first one is actually a duplicate. And I don't even know how, but we actually did figure out how. If you put an invoice number into BSNA, it's not supposed to duplicate itself, but.
Oh, I see.
She also put a PO number. And so that's why it duplicated. And so we did catch that one. That one's a duplicate.
I think it's smart, though, that you're sorting this by the vendor because that helps identify.
Yeah, this is actually two different reports from BSNA just in Excel put together because I wanted a description so you could see it. And there's another issue that I have on here of the treasurer having lodging at Shanty Creek, which is only 15 miles away from our our residences. And so I think that needs to go in the policy and procedure manual at some point in the future that MTA has guidelines, which I'll talk about more later too, that say like 20 miles away from your residence. Because I do know that MTA is having a conference coming up soon at the resort, and I don't think that's a good use of taxpayer dollars. That's all I wanted to say about that.
For what?
To stay at a conference that's within 15 or 20 miles from your house is not a good use of taxpayer dollars.
Well, that's that's your opinion. I don't agree.
It's almost an hour drive during deer season at night, so.
I'm saying, I said, that's my opinion on that.
Right, yeah, I think there's a lot of networking that happens outside of the sessions that is very important to create those relationships that people that you can contact when you need assistance with this and that. And I've got years of putting conferences together. Eight years I coordinated the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Conferences statewide.
So the MTA, so if you'd like to talk about it more, the MTA.
I think this is getting off topic if we need to develop a policy that should be handled at a different meeting. Any other further discussion? You're free to disagree with me. I I just don't want to get off track on the meeting. All right, so.
I just wanted people aware of that before they're approving that.
Okay. So do we, we need a motion to approve the bills for or to approve the bills? Because we pulled them out of the packet. So is is just the one duplicate charge is the only issue?
And under under the totals, there's a line item I pointed out to Wendy. She's going to check, it has.
It's all zeros, and I don't know why in BSNA it's coming out of all zero department. And I think it might be part of that sad thing. So I have to go see how.
All zero would be a revenue or a liability.
Right, yeah, and I think that's why it may be set up wrong in BSNA. I need to go back and look.
Okay, all right.
What is that that you're looking at?
On the on the total, the summary, the first line.
The bottom of the second page.
Totals by activity.
Says total by activity, zero and 1607.
So you're right, I think it is.
Well, in the original report, it says 000 as the department and.
Yeah, you'll have to find out, I guess, what that, what sums up. I tried to figure out what summed up to 1607, and I couldn't.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the bills with with the amendment removing the duplicate charge or the duplicate payment.
I'll second.
Seconded by errands, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, none opposed, motion passes. All right, next, we've got unfinished business, my favorite title, any park and recreation items. The first item is ballpark lights. Wendy said you were going to have a verbal update.
So at a previous meeting, it was asked if we could just shut those off for the season, and I called consumers. And the reason it hasn't never been done before is because it's literally someone going out there and shutting off the service. And if it's for more than six months at a time, they literally, they would have to go back and actually reestablish another account and open it again. So she said it's a lot of work for that. And then there's also a charge.
The trip charge. Did you tell me how much that would be?
I believe it was ninety-five dollars.
Okay, so it'd be ninety-five to turn them off, ninety-five to turn them on.
Yeah.
And it's costing thirty a month, so it's a wash.
Twenty-five, twenty-seven, yeah.
Okay. I'm glad you checked. Thank you.
This is maybe a dumb question, but I'm wondering, I, I know a few years ago when I was on the Park and Rec Committee, they went through some work to repair those lights. But the question is, do we, do we use them? I know it's kind of a dumb question.
Yeah, if it's light up till ten o'clock in the summer, that was a good question you asked. I don't know.
I mean, Jill, is that something you could just follow up with? I think Amber's obviously involved in that program. I'm not sure if Brandon's involved in it. I'm just curious.
I mean, I think some of them are actually flip on the ballpark, you know, at night and some are just.
I was gonna say, I don't even know what the process is.
There must have been a good reason to put them in, but I don't know.
I just think it's always good to just ask the question.
It's just still a little dark in the spring when they start practicing.
I know it's a small issue, but yeah.
I remember Amber saying that that was a big benefit, that a lot of, a lot of parks don't have the light. So it's supposedly.
I mean, good enough. I think it was just a simple question. Do we use them? Yes, no? Okay, next is Tim. You were gonna provide a verbal update regarding a schedule for setting rates and dates for Whitewater Township Park for twenty twenty-six.
Right. We already got, Linda and I got a recommendation from the park employees for changing the rate structure and, you know, opening day, closing day, and that kind of thing. Met with them this, well, Linda met with them this week and thought it would be better if we wait until the end of November, because we had more work for them to do. And I think who's all gonna be doing that? It's gonna be Zach and Tom and Vicki maybe collectively.
Yeah, collaborating on that. We should probably talk about, though, a couple key things is that I think they're already have a really good head start on this. The question is really, the last meeting, the second meeting in November is the night prior to Thanksgiving.
Right.
So my only concern is I wanna be careful that, that are people actually going to be available for that meeting? So that's a question to the board. No, anybody else not available the night prior to Thanksgiving?
I thought that was kinda close to Thanksgiving. What if, what if we made that meeting on the Monday of that week?
Do we need it?
Makes it even shorter.
But that, that's a question too. Do we, do we need it?
Well, we're likely only gonna have one meeting in December. So I suppose that's okay. Have one in November, one in December, but.
I'm hosting Thanksgiving, so that'll be rough.
That will be, that will be bad.
Yeah.
Be rough.
I, I know that it's not a good idea. Everybody has to do things for Thanksgiving.
So we might have to just wait until.
So I would, I, I don't like pushing things till the end where it's not, you know, where it gets us up against the wall. I mean, I think we should probably send the challenge back to those guys to, to get it together. I mean, that would mean they're getting it together next week, right?
For the thirteenth.
For the thirteenth. I mean, they can always come in and amend it.
I think we have an extra weekend this time.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, because of the length of November or October.
So the urgency of it is that we need to set rates sooner than later because we, we have website work to do, work with Rover Pass, we're planning to open reservations February one instead of April one. And so there's just, that's why we, I really don't wanna wait till December that.
Right. And they, and so obviously this entails, you know, the camping rates, which their current proposal is to simplify those. And then to set rates for ice, talk about wood. Wood was a big problem last year, so trying to figure out what they can do better about wood. And then, I mean, honestly, we've flipped back and forth about boat launch fees. Should we be making an adjustment? I recommended that they call the harbor master in Elk Rapids, find out what they're doing. But I mean, I've, this is the third presentation I've sat through with Leslie Myers, and I mean, it sounds like it's coming down and it's coming down fast. The, the park is gonna get hit and that they're not gonna be ju, they're not gonna be classified as one user.
Right.
That's obvious. So, and I mean, if we look at our boat launch activity, we will find that in the thousands.
We have almost five thousand launches a year.
Yes. That's what the data says. And so I, I think we probably.
If it's a DNR boat launch, do they have to pay?
It's not a DNR boat launch.
It's on their DNR site.
Just because they put it on the site doesn't mean they own it.
It's not, it's private. Cause people that had the rec pass were thinking they didn't have to pay, but you do.
There's a big sign at the park now that says this is not.
But she even said today here that even the DNR is not exempt, the state of Michigan is, but not DNR, so.
So, and the DNR does their thing through their recreational pass thing. So, and I don't know what the individual, I've heard they have pay stations. I'm not sure what the individual launch cost is for an out of state. I don't know. But the bottom line is, we need to think about that. And I, I mean, personally, I think since we know that we, we are going to have to chin that expense and it is very likely in the thousands of dollars per year we'll be paying. So I, I think we probably need to look at a decrease on that. So.
Has there been any discussion about extending camping season into October?
Yes.
Okay, good.
They were proposing that they extend it to the end of October, which is consistent with a lot of other campaigns.
October twenty.
I was always wondering why we closed early.
It's really quiet there, just so you know. It's really, really, and I, cause I can see that part from my living room, even in September, super quiet weekends. Activity. And they were talking about, can they do self-registration during the week when there's nothing going on? So people show up Friday night through Sunday. All right. So did that cover everything on that, Tim?
Just the, the.
So we'll, we'll slate this for first meeting in November?
The electric project is moving along. Little hiccup here and there, but nothing major. And the electrical inspector approved the three panels that have been installed, so.
I just wanted to mention too, on the park and recreation items too, just to get it out there that, you know, we had, I had mentioned at a prior meeting that there was a problem with toys being left in the park. And Rachel Steelman offered to build, her and her family to build a share box in the park. And so my understanding, that's approved. We don't need a motion for that. And she's, she's gonna move forward with that. So, okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, and Tom already, I think, communicated with her on the location for, under the pavilion, so.
Great question, though. Is there gonna be an opportunity to see how we ended up in the park as terms of revenue and expenses?
Why don't we talk about that on our next business item?
I'm just, I'm just wondering, are we gonna be able to get some time carved out to look at that?
Yes, I think we should.
At some future.
He wants a specific discussion on a future meeting about just financial performance of the park.
Yeah.
Which I think Tim's already been looking at that. We've had several discussions on that. So, yeah, so if you can note that for, maybe that's a good additional discussion item. We're doing all the park stuff at the beginning of November. Like, let's just, like, look at that.
Look at where we're at.
That was part of the information they sent that we're waiting for the.
Yeah, I realize you don't have everything you need to.
Compared to comparison of twenty-four to twenty-five is what we're, we're gonna have. And then I'll put financials to it because we have the reports now. I believe all the revenue is in, all the Rover Pass stuff is in.
Yeah, and you know that Rover Pass produces, that you can generate all kinds of really good reports out of Rover Pass. The only thing that that wouldn't include is the stuff that we sell at the campground or walk-ins that pay cash for a campsite, but it would have the vast majority of at least camp reservations. And it compares it to last year as the history, so kinda nice.
The other thing is, I had a detailed discussion with Tom Bartnicki and Zach Whaley a couple days ago. It was Tuesday. Just about duties, division of duties between them. So I will bring that in here too.
In the process of what's happening, like standard operating processes of how things are handled?
We talked about that too. We talked about staffing for next year, what that needs to look like. So we can bring in, I can bring a summary. So that can be a very holistic discussion in November. Does that sound good? Okay. All right. Now we're on to new business. So the first item is the item that we added, which is financial statements. So I'll just introduce this since I.
Sorry, excuse me, there's one item yet under unfinished business?
Oh, just a verbal.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Yeah, thank you, Kay.
It's all right.
Yep, go ahead. Wendy, update on legal service search?
So besides the, excuse me, three letters that were specifically sent to specific lawyers that have not been answered. We also put in a record eagle, a little announcement or ad, and that has not had any responses either.
Wow. All right, any discussion or suggestions on that?
Wow, we probably just need to make some phone calls.
I think so. We have a lot of conflict of interest in our township, where people have either represented someone or are currently representing someone, and so they are unwilling.
Are there not resources through MTA or any of those?
They're gonna be farther out, yeah, than our local area. So we can keep, start spreading, yeah.
Is there, I mean, this, this, you have been doing the work on this, the follow-up work so far, the clerk's office has been. Is there something that the rest of us could maybe do to assist? I think I had a suggestion from one of my neighbors who's an attorney, and he doesn't work in municipal law, but I just asked him if he would have a recommendation because he's been in the biz a long time. And he gave me the name of an attorney in Gaylord Grayling area, which isn't too far. It's an hour.
Right, yeah. I guess, I guess the public was looking that someone could come to our meeting and actually, you know, participate kinda thing. So we can keep.
Right. And I, I mean, is it helpful? I mean, do you want?
That was helpful.
But do you want me to make that call, or would you rather be a central point on, on reaching out on this?
Well, we can follow up with phone calls and see if they've received our letter, that kinda thing. I haven't done that part yet.
Okay. And, and did the attorney from the Gaylord Grayling area get a letter or no?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you did, okay, good. Yeah, I, I do have another person, but it was one of those, they volunteered to be of service. They weren't recommended. To me, that's different. So I have a name of John Klein.
Okay. I've also heard of someone in Charlevoix too, so I have a couple more leads.
I think Deb might have an idea too, somebody from Bel Air.
Another possibility I'll share with you later.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you for the update. All right. So now we're ready for new business. So we've got this just topic of financial statements. And so I've talked to you guys individually. So we've, you know, we started off here in office with Fund Balance and Sage Independent Systems managing our various inbound and outbound money. And now we're, we're on BSNA and, you know, it's not without, you always have struggles when you switch systems. But at least now we're in one system. And I know that our audit firm did a lot of work trying to help with balancing the books as part of the audit activity already. And so, and we do not have the audit report yet.
Correct.
And did they give you an update yesterday at all?
I think he called during this meeting.
Okay. All right. So obviously, we will get more information from the audit firm regarding their opinion or their
John's way.
Their assessment of, of the state of our books.
Well, that's coming any day now, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it was due at the end of the month. We filed for an extension with the state. So, so what I would like to do is just have a discussion about, we've done some checking a couple different ways, and there's a CPA firm that is, a municipal CPA firm that is recommended manarchistarian, that they have come alongside other townships to help them, you know, verify and improve their financial statements, making sure everything balances and so forth. So I'd just like to have a discussion about potentially availing ourselves of their experience in coming in and just making sure that our financial statements are accurate and correct. I know it's been a real struggle in the past with the two systems. Now we've imported all this data. Very likely, like we talked today, that there's some flyers out there. And just make sure that we've got everything very tidy is, is what I'm suggesting, that we get some professional help accomplishing that.
So do I understand that a outside CPA firm would come in and review the activities of the last year or so since we, since the new board took over and looked at, and look at the any issues or concerns that they have in terms of the transition to BSNA or can you kind of frame the work that they would do?
And also just general operations. I mean, we have to keep in mind, our audit firm, you know, they're always a year behind. So they've been focused on twenty twenty-four in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. So this would be more to focus on. I'm assuming that they will give us a product such that we have a starting point. I could be wrong. But then really focusing in on the stuff that's outside of the bounds of the current audit that's being completed.
So I can kind of expand on it. So I talked to Steve Kurnovic yesterday at length and just about, you know, what do you do for municipalities? They have, their firm has different divisions. So they have a governmental division where they have people that assist townships and cities that used to be clerks and treasurers and worked with BSNA, so they have that expertise.
Nice.
Yeah. And, and they, they also have a relationship with our auditors. They work with them. And so they helped, they worked for, just put a proposal together for the city of Charlotte, and he based, he sent me something yesterday, late, and I wanted to kinda have it for the board to talk about and decide today, but it's too much for, to dump on you. And then so I thought for the November meeting, I'd get this out to you, to all of you to review. But they worked with the Village of Elk Rapids when they went through the turmoil a couple years ago with a new treasurer and clerk, and then, you know, they had that. So they worked with them. They've worked, they worked with East Bay Township occasionally. And what I see the need is that we have done a conversion, even like this one where something is coded all zeros. I mean, there's always gonna be an issue when you do any kind of a conversion. But for us to go forward, they can provide us a service where we can take our, as an example, our bank statements, reconcile all of those back to November. I assume the last one that was done was probably October by the prior administration. But I don't know if they kept those in a file in a paper form, but so.
They reconciled right until the day they left, November twentieth. They, they did a mid-month.
But they did them into Sage, so, right, did they?
No, I have reports from Fund Balance and Sage, the paper copies that they did.
So that'll be a starting point, is what I'm suggesting. And then, and then balancing all of those, I mean, the bank statements are two and a half pages. It's not individually by month, it's not gonna probably take that long. But they charge hourly rates, and if we balance all of those, then what they also provide is mentoring services, which with, whether it's treasurer, treasurer needs help, clerk wants help with payroll. They do payroll, they do everything. So it's kind of a one-stop shop. They have four hundred clients, fifty of them annually. Or actually, I should say after an election, go, they do these services for small townships. They have a lot of small townships that they work for. So I just think that it would be something that I would like Jill and Wendy, we don't wanna have a quorum outside of this meeting, but if Jill and Wendy are agreeable, I would like to connect you with him. So you can have a conference call with him and he can just kind of talk to me, talk to you guys like he did with me yesterday. And after I talked to him, I was like, oh, this would be really nice. And I think it would get us to the point then where it will streamline, they're gonna have recommendations, they're gonna say, this is what we did, this is how we recommend that you do it. They have like the auditors, they have access, you give them access to BSNA, they know the reports to run, and that's kind of.
So I guess we need to time this with the current audit company too, because the, the plan with the current audit company is that they want to get everything set up until the end of March. They're gonna, this is the plan that I understand. They will give journal entries to Wendy to input to get all the funds balanced and everything correct from that point. Then they were going to work with me to try to go into BSNA now because it does not appear that anything was reconciled. And I don't know if that is accurate or not, but there is nothing. When I went into May to look at the reconciliation, it, there's stuff, transactions that go back for years, and it's kinda the same problem that I had in Sage. I had sixty-four million dollars worth of unreconciled things that went back ten years. So I don't know if the prior board was actually using the reconciliation program that is built into the accounting software, or if they had a different way of doing it. But that's why I needed help with the auditor, is to fix all of that problem to get us current. And we were able to reconcile all Sage things to the bank statements. It never balanced with Wendy's because we just, I couldn't get the reports that I needed. And when I did, their, the information was nowhere close. So and I'm not familiar enough with BSNA to know, you know, I haven't worked in it enough yet to know how bad the problem is right now. But I think that we absolutely, and I would back it wholeheartedly. how bad the problem is right now, but I think that we absolutely, and I would back it wholeheartedly, need to hire a company to come in and review the work that has been done since the day we took office. And I think that it should include payroll as well. Um, just to make sure that we have input everything correctly and as soon as I get a fresh starting plate, I have no um worries about being able to reckon reconcile going forward. But for me to have to go backwards and try to do this for an entire year, if not longer, because I saw even in BSNA, there's transactions from years ago. So I'm not sure if those were just like outstanding checks that they never dealt with and they were still carrying over, but there was a lot of information in there. So what I'm, what I'm talking about with Gaybridge is that, um, is it Richard? Can't, I'm skipping his name right now. Um, so Richard wanted to help us get through the audit and then he was planning on helping to um reconcile that first month going forward to just clean out all that old stuff.
Okay, so I, it sounds to me like, um, just trying to cut to the chase and keep an eye on the time. Would it be suitable for you and Wendy? I know you've got the stuff going on with Gaybridge also. And I understand, you know, that should be getting clear here in the next week. So between now and our next meeting, which is in three weeks, can you and Wendy, you know, get together and talk to Manor Casterian, the Steve Kurnovic?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that.
I think it would be best for you two to put your heads together, follow up with Gaybridge as well and then figure out how to configure getting this help. And I'm not surprised by what you're saying, that there's transactions from prior years that were not
It's because it came all from Fund Balance and so they took the last five years and put it in there and so if it wasn't cleared as saying it in Fund Balance, it's not going to say it in BSNA.
It tells me they probably didn't use the
So I, I think the big action here is just all of us agreeing that we need some help. Um, I think it is the right thing to do and I
Still want to repay for stuff that's already been done.
No, but I did bring that up because I said, and that's why I was happy to hear that they work with Gay, Gaybridge. Because I said now we hired them to come in and get us through the audit to, to the financial statements. And I said, I don't want to duplicate that work, so he understands that. And then you, that's something you can talk to him about, about the extent of what they did and
And kind of the extent of what Richard was offering too, because he felt, you know, pretty confident that he could get us to a clean slate. I guess my concern is how even if he gets us to a clean slate, starting April first of twenty twenty-four, how accurate i- is the information that has been input since then? Because if it hasn't been input correctly or um if everything isn't input, then it's still going to be very, very difficult to reconcile.
But that's why you need the help, right? And so the good news is Manor Casterian has experience working with Gaybridge. So maybe you want to involve them both in a conversation and then you guys can come back and tell us what you think.
Well, that's why I called Richard yesterday to see what he thought of
Right.
This firm and what they could do for us and I wanted to get his opinion, so.
So you talked to Richard?
He hasn't called me back. He probably thinks I'm calling it.
We also know from East Bay, this, these people come with high recommendations, okay?
Yeah.
All right, good, so.
So are we in agreement about payroll being audited too by this company?
They should look at everything, I believe, including the taxes.
I think that they will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna let you two put your heads together with those two resources and then come back and tell us.
Okay.
In case you need like authorization for money.
Yeah, I think that there will be, there's a, there's an agreement that will have to be approved by the board that I'm gonna forward to you. I thought it was, oh, here it is, okay.
Okay, so we've got twenty minutes, so we're gonna try and get through as much of the rest of this stuff as we can, um.
A short break before they
Yeah, and we should have a short break and to use the restroom. So, um, I'm thinking of uh skipping over winter tax bill newsletter insert because I, I don't, I want to make sure we take care of critical actions, so um, let's talk about this pay increase for the deputy treasurer. I think I've read the information. Hopefully, everybody's reviewed it. Um, the one question that I would have, or just to reiterate, I think um, all of our um deputies that we have are in the merit-based portion of the compensation, compensation pay scale that we have. Um, I wanted to clarify, if we give uh Andy the proposed raise now, is he ineligible for a raise in the spring or, or what we're thinking about on that? Um, the pay of these various employees is all very closely clustered. So that's it for, that's just a question, so I don't know if anybody else has questions or comments.
No, and my comment on that, right, or I guess my answer is that because it's in the merit, um, it does not go up by cost of living increase. The, the, the range does, like the max will, the first five steps will, if it's two percent, three percent, whatever that cost of living is. Um, but anybody that falls in the merit area, and I think it's only the three deputies. Um, but um they, those have to come back to the board individually, anybody in the merit area.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, to answer your question, just if he gets a raise now, he's not gonna automatically get one April one.
Right, it would be dependent on me, since he's merit-based, it would be kind of an annual
Right.
Increase or, you know, special circumstance, I guess, or.
Other questions on this for Jill? Anybody? Wendy, any questions? All right, then I'll make a motion um to approve the proposed uh increase of six percent for the deputy treasurer to a rate of pay of twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Said that wrong, twenty-four, twenty-nine.
I'll second that.
And actually, I have to add some additional wording, um, effective. This would be effective with what pay period?
It's, it's correct, yeah, October thirteen.
Oh, okay.
So this is coming
Beginning of the
Period that she'll be working on, so that's why I put that date on there.
Thank you for the clarification.
October thirteen.
That's, it's the beginning.
Uh, well, we're in, that was, that was
It'll be retroactive and you can't do that.
No, so it has to be Monday.
Isn't it, yeah, isn't it effective?
So it'll be a split, I was trying to save her the hassle of having to do a prorated.
She won't have to, if you just make it effective on Monday, that's a new pay period. The twenty-seventh?
So that's why I'm gonna restate this whole thing, Kay, so don't worry.
Yep.
Is that right, Wendy, that date?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so let me re, let me withdraw my motion and uh restate it, so I'm making a motion to approve a six percent increase in compensation for Deputy Treasurer Andy T. Zack to a rate of pay of twenty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents per hour effective Monday, October twenty-seventh.
I'll still second it.
Okay, motion made by Slopsima, seconded by Hoaxima, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Um, how about next, let's go after this, uh township ACH payments. Uh, there was, it looked like a procedure and a resolution for that.
Yeah, so um with the addition of BSNA, we are now allowed to take ACH payments um by the BS, BSNA website only. We can't do ACH um transactions in our office, but they are able to go to the BSNA online uh site and make ACH payments there. And then we are allowed to take credit card payments um here at the township hall and at the um park. So we do need to adopt policies to accept both ACH and credit card transactions. Um, one thing that I am working on, I just didn't get it done um in time for today's meeting, but um we do need a quick training policy on credit card transactions too for all employees who are going to um be able to handle credit card um transactions and that is just for the um PCI DSSS standard. Um, so it just talks about security and how you're not supposed to like write down full numbers and the security codes and you're not supposed to keep records on file, things like that. So I'm just coming up with a quick explanation of the security policies, a little quiz that they can take at the end and
That's in the future, okay, so we've got two procedures and two accompanying resolutions. Does anybody have concerns with it?
So our current PMP already makes uh allowance for um ACH transactions. So basically, it's very general, it says automated clearinghouse transactions. Um, it has definitions, it has ability to enter into those, it doesn't say if they're going out or in, that kind of thing. It's very general saying ACH transactions, so I believe that one's already covered. That one does not need that for any kind of taxes or anything like that. And that is supposed to be signed by the treasurer, so that needs to be updated in the piece, PMP. MTA has examples of this, so their um PMP examples for all these kind of things for like credit card use or ACH is very similar to our current PMP. Um, they have just a little section in theirs for credit card, debit card and other electronic payments. I think we should add that into our PMP, current PMP under four ten, where we have credit card use about our use of our own credit cards, but then add a section that MTA has for, um, to match a resolution which they also have an example of for um credit card and using those for payments.
Would it be separate?
Yeah, my, my understanding, we had policies for making credit card payments and making ACH payments, but not accepting.
If you look at the PMP that's on the OneDrive, it says arrangements and electronic transactions of funds. Like to govern the use of these electronic transactions and ACH arrangements for Whitewater Township.
Okay, so it sounds like you're suggesting that Jill, and that was one of my questions, this should be in the PMP manual. So it ne- needs to have the proper numbering scheme of our PMP manual. So it sounds like you're suggesting that she review those resources and really what needs to be updated is our PMP manual. We can't have
And I feel like that's already covered in our PMP manual.
Right, so we need to update, we need to make sure we update our PMP manual as appropriate.
Right, and so like the wrong things were cited in the, in the actual um proposed policy too, like the wrong MCL, that kind of thing. So MTA actually has a resolution for acceptance of payments by financial transaction device, that they changed it from actually saying credit cards. So I believe this would be the better way to do it and even says in here stuff about like fees charged, um, that kind of thing.
So it sounds like there's some standard recommendations, plus there's what we currently have.
Correct.
And whatever we decide we need, needs to be in the PMP manual numbering scheme format. You know, because there's a spot in the manual.
So I would recommend Wendy, I mean, since she's already looked at this and knows what she wants to do and she's kind of in charge of that stuff, she can edit it however she wants and I don't mind how it's input, it just needs to be input, so.
I just want it to be correct, like, well, I would let you two work that out.
I mean, I can give you a recommendation of what I see from the MTA.
No, I think she's deferring to Wendy to um propose something
The way she wants it.
Just to make sure that we're covered on um the, the uh, the ACH, sounds like we are, but maybe maybe it needs to be updated.
Credit card use.
But, and then incorporate something for the credit card and then bring them back to the board for approval.
I can do that.
That way, just so we're covered.
And from what I've read though too, um, we are supposed to have some sort of training on anybody that is using, taking credit cards for
You can do that part.
Yes.
Okay, so, so it sounds like, um, looking to all of you, we have consensus that Wendy will take Jill's input and the various resources and come back to us with an update to the PMP manual.
Tabled.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna go out and train the park staff next year.
Okay, and I would love it if we can put footers on all documents that indicate what the heck the document is. Because sometimes we post some of this stuff on the website and then we don't know where it's at, or at least I don't know where it's at. Revision date.
Revision dates are on the OneDrive.
Okay.
Are they, okay.
All right, all right, good enough, so um we've got ten minutes. I'm gonna suggest we take a ten-minute break and then come back and address new business. Um, the discussion with the attorney on closed session, so. Is, is everybody okay with that?
Well, are we not gonna get to Jill's board comment thing she wanted to do or?
Okay, well, I guess we could do that, but it would have to be very fast.
Okay.
So why don't we go ahead and have board discussion here? You want to go first, Jill?
Yeah, um, so again, as I was saying, um, earlier this year, I declared a conflict of interest on the topic of short-term rentals. At that time, I was under a lot of pressure, um, and didn't fully understand all my rights and responsibilities in this area and the impacts that it would have moving forward uh within the board. Um, and for context, I already told all you guys, our property in Whitewater Township, we've had the same group for three years. They stay all summer, we haven't rented anything outside of that particular group. After doing a lot of research, talking to um other legal professional organizations and um several attorneys on this matter in great detail, um, I have learned that my situation does not represent a unique financial interest under Michigan's conflict of interest standards. The regulation of short-term rentals affects a large number of property owners and has broad community implications. It's not an issue that impacts me personally in a distinct or exceptional way. And for that reason, I am retracting my previous conflict of interest declaration and will participate in board discussions and decisions related to short-term rentals going forward. And I just want to be fully transparent about this change and ensure that my reasoning clearly is reflected for the record.
I don't have
All right.
I don't have anything.
All right, I don't have anything further at this point. Wendy, you have anything else for board discussion? Randy, no? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to take a ten-minute break. And then we will reconvene for item, new business discussion with attorney. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, you need a second and a quick vote, seconded, seconded by errands, all those in favor?
Aye.